Pastor Cameron Craig of First Church of God. Please remain standing.
Father God, we come to you this evening knowing that you are the all-powerful and all-knowing God, that you would guide us, give us discernment and understanding through every motion, through every decision that is made this evening. God, I pray, Lord, your hedge of protection here, keep us safe, and allow for all decisions to be within your will. God, we love you, we serve you, it's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Dan Self, American Legion.
If everyone will face the flag and remove their headgear, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none. Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. And first, we have Mrs. Jerika Fox.
Jerika Fox, 501 Vine Street. Mayor, members of the council, I'm just here tonight as the year is ending and wrapping up, just to go over a few events that we have coming up and then a few projects that we have either just completed or are working on completing. So, we came before you, I think it's been several months ago, for the CDBG funds for the beautification project on the 400 block of Vine. I was hoping that I would have news, we were hoping to hear by the end of October. Unfortunately, due to a change in leadership in that department, we've yet to hear one way or another on that grant. So hopefully, here in the next few weeks, I will be able to give you positive information on that. So, it's caused a little bit of a delay. Our lighted Christmas parades quickly approaching, that will be Friday, December 6th, at 6:30. Anyone that's interested in being in that, 5:45 is lineup at Hydro Adventures, and then it begins at 6:30. We, let's see what I have here, Christmas, our Christmas decorations will be going up right after the Thanksgiving holiday, and Municipal Utilities is working with us again, and we're restringing all of the Christmas lights. We did purchase new banners last year, and we've purchased a few more this year for the downtown area, but as far as our lighted decorations, which my understanding is, I think we've had a little over 10 years at this point, I think it's when the Dream Initiative first started, in 2010, 2009, 2010. So they're very expensive, so instead of purchasing new at this point, we're just restringing them with new LED lights, so they're at least still lit, they're not the colors anymore, they're all just white, but at least we still have those available. So we're gonna restring 10 more this year. So all of those will be going up soon, and it'll be a nice addition for downtown. Our light project that a lot of people have positively spoke about on the 500 block of Vine there in front of City Hall, Bronzeow, and Janet Brown's office, those look fantastic, we're excited that they're there, I know a lot of people are ready to see more, and so I'm here tonight to let you all know that we have purchased another five poles for the 300 block of Vine. So that area where Haffey's Courtyard and Haffey's is, that will be completed, and our hope is that we receive the grant from CDBG and it can finish the two blocks in between. So we'll have four blocks, they're completed with the light structure. And our last event with the light project, I do want to thank Smith &amp; Company and Municipal Utilities for donating all of their time to do that for us, we greatly, greatly appreciate it. But our farmer's market, our last event of the season is Saturday, December 14th. Our market runs from 8 to 2, we have pictures with Santa from 10 to 2, and the first 50 participants get either a free hot cocoa from S&amp;M Donuts from Andy Moore, or a free coffee from our local Foxtrot. So, 10 to 2, pictures with Santa, 8 to 2, December 14th for our last market, which is our Christmas market. So, that's all I have tonight, I just wanted to update you all and wish you happy holidays.
Thank you. I have one question.
Yes.
Do we have a carnival coming downtown or something?
Well, I just drove by today and noticed it, so I have not been to a Coliseum, we didn't have a Coliseum board meeting last month, I believe due to a quorum, but we'll be meeting next week, so I'm not, Mark, do you know about it?
You know.
Yeah, I drove by it today, I was like, we have a carnival in November.
And I got a phone call too about it.
I thought it was a little cold, just my opinion, but I guess, I think it's normally on the carnival crew this time of year, and in the spring, they're the ones that contact the Coliseum and set up, so they pay the rental of the parking lot, and so I guess they think November is a great time for a carnival. I know, I was surprised too, so. Do you all have any questions for me? No? All right, thank you all.
Thank you for a good job. We have Mr. Christman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Jim Christman, 464 North Main, and what a difference the agenda makes on the attendance at the council meetings. I have several items that I'd like to talk about, mostly they're just quick bullet points, some things that may require some research, but in reviewing the county owner's map, it appears that the city did not get or did not record a deed for part of Shelby Road, that portion being owned by the Missouri Conference Association of the Seventh-day Adventists. Is that, did we build a road across a church property? I don't know the answer to that. Second item I have is, what's the status on the unpopular $600,000 consultant fee that's associated with the move for the police station and the purchase of the property? I haven't heard an update on that, and just wondering what's happening there. Tonight, you will consider several items on the agenda that are really, I won't say concealed from the public, but not very transparent to what the public sees. There are the city clerk's report, and the various reports from all of the department heads, and the checks written, and so on and so forth. We have asked, we the citizens have asked a number of times over the last several years that this be available prior to the meeting, I just wonder if any progress is being made on that. You know, I think you referred to it probably as your members packet, and I still don't know why that couldn't be part of the information that's available to the public. It was news to me at the last meeting that we can't discuss items that are on the voting agenda, and I do want to compliment you for opening up the floor at that point, but I would also ask that you take one additional step on this idea for future meetings, where something is controversial and new information has been forth, perhaps it could be workshopped a second time at the meeting prior to the vote that evening, and give the public a chance to get a word in of something new that's come up, something to consider there. You council members, one of the problems that we've got, not with the city council, but with every organization, is you don't talk much. Why, I don't know, but it's difficult for us sitting in the audience to understand what your thinking is when you don't talk. Now, I'm sure you talk in the closed meetings, but that doesn't get to us. We need to understand why you're doing, why you're taking the action that you're taking, and I would ask that you give some consideration for making your views more public. The balance of what I have to do has to do with the purchase of the bank property and the police station on that property. How many of you know that the property being considered for purchase, parts of it are outside the city limits of Popper Bluff, or are in the business of buying county property? How many of you realize that if the police station goes where it's proposed out there, if there were a call at Shelby Road and Highway 53, the first thing the police car has to do is get out in the county, run down Shelby Road, which is not in the city, and then get back in down to the 53 intersection? The same is true if a call's being answered at the hospital in the north end. This is the same situation that we have coming in on Business 67 from the south. You come into the city down around Memorial Gardens, about a couple of hundred yards up the road, you leave the city again and don't get back in until approximately 11th Street. This chopped-up city that we have needs to have the holes closed in it. The location of the police station is at the outer edge of city limits. There is no development to the west, there is no development to the south, and it's unlikely that there will be any significant development there. Would we want the police station all the way at the far edge on the east side, or the south side, or the north side? Why put it at the edge of the city on the west side? The development is just not going to happen out there, not in the foreseeable future. I really believe the police station should be centrally located. This is big. I really don't believe that the cattle farm that's there and the proposed city frog pond needs that much police protection. What I do believe, back up. What I do believe is that you have reasons for your decisions, and I'm trying to understand them. I believe that you're committed to a new police station and a new city hall, and I think the public supports a new police station and a new city hall, but not if it gives away the farm. It needs to be a modest structure that's something we can pay for. We don't need another project like the Coliseum that has had us hamstrung for a number of years, or the eight points it's doing for us now. There's a lot of things that can be done more efficiently, and I ask you to do diligence to do that. Now for a few comments on the appraisals. The appraisals that you're depending on are over four years old, and they were done for the purpose of road right-of-way. Now, the way it's done for road right-of-way is kind of interesting, because what you do is you take the value of the land as it exists today, you cut the road out, and then you value the land that's left over, and the difference is what the value of the roadway is. That's a whole lot different than coming up with the value of acreage, and I suspect that a new appraisal would show a very different value. I have yet to see the way that the numbers were determined, but it's something like 75 to, between 75 and $80,000 an acre for the land out there. I don't think anybody in their right mind thinks that that swamp land is worth 75 to $80,000. I'm also waiting to see how usable the floodway is. There's a floodway and there's a flood plain out there, and it's my understanding that the floodway cannot be used for anything other than maybe park area, and I hope we're not thinking about using this as a park area, because it's a very expensive park area. Interestingly enough, the floodway did not figure into the appraisals. It was before and after, it was part of the property, but it didn't, it wasn't affected by the roadway. Are there any comparable properties that have sold nearby that would give us value for this land? I don't know the answer to that. I sincerely hope you will do diligence and avoid a group think. Group think is where one person comes up with the idea, kind of sells the next person on it, and then they sell the next person on it, and so forth, and before you have, before you know what you're all thinking alike, but you really haven't had independent thoughts there. So back up, take a look at it, and see what really is the right thing to do, and either justify to the public why you're thinking the way you are, or find a reason not to purchase this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I second my motion. Well, thank you for backing me up earlier.
Okay, do we need to redo that? Item eight, there are no workshop items for discussion. Item nine, action required items. Bill number 8191, the city council will take action on an ordinance updating the International Building Code, International Fire Code, and International Municipal Code.
Motion for first reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 500, relating to updating the International Building Code, the International Fire Code, and the International Mechanical Code.
Motion for second reading of bill number 8191. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff Code of City Ordinances, Section 500, relating to updating the International Building Code, the International Fire Code, and the International Mechanical Code.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8191 is adopted. Item BB, bill number 8192, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Residential Code.
Motion for first reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 500, relating to adopting the 2018 International Residential Code.
Motion for second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 500, relating to adopting the 2018 International Residential Code.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bill number 8192 is adopted. Item CC, bill number 8193, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 500, relating to adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 500, relating to adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8193 is adopted. Item DD, bill number 8194, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we table this till the next workshop session, I believe it would be December 2nd, and that's partly out of a request that we all have from the Butler County Landlords Association, so that they maybe could be a little bit better informed and up to speed on that, and I too would appreciate even a little further understanding, I think. Maybe at that time, it could be highlighted a little bit more, maybe Mr. Winters could provide for us, if not, I don't know how lengthy the copies are, but at least something of bullets and points that he thinks might be of relevance to us.
Point of clarification, Councilman, your motion is to table it until the workshop session, December 2nd, but not to include the voting session, December 2nd? Just for the clerk's benefit, we'll know how to put the agenda together.
I don't see this as a hurry for us at all, so I think at this point, I'm just, my motion would be to go to the workshop session. I would go ahead and say that I would assume after the workshop session, we would vote to take it then to the next voting, to the next voting session.
Thank you for your clarification.
Second is a motion. I'll second his motion.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Item EE, resolution number 1910, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the Popper Bluff Parks and Recreation Department to apply for funding from Walmart and Walmart Foundation for the Betterment of the Community.
Motion for the reading of resolution number 1910. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
The city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the City of Popper Bluff Parks and Recreation Department to apply for funding from Walmart and the Walmart Foundation for the betterment of the community.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Resolution number 1910 is adopted. Item FF, the city council of the City of Popper Bluff will meet in a closed session in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 16, Point 21, Point 1, Point 2, Point 3, Point 9, Point 11, Point 12, Point 13, and Point 14, revised statute of Missouri, following the city manager's report.
I can motion move in closed session following the city manager's report. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
To move into the closed session?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Mr. Masking hand.
I know there's been a lot of controversy the last, gosh, several months with the council, and, you know, everybody has their own opinion, and I've said before, I think this council makes their decision on what they think the best interest to the city is. Kind of walked out of here at the last meeting, I think everybody felt a little beat up, and that's what you all get paid that dollar a year for, and I know I have a much bigger salary, so I, but after the meeting, I think it was a day or two later, I had a person that used to be a coworker that worked for the city for 27 years, and she sent me something that was sent to her, I even think this may have been in the paper, because it seemed like I read it at one time, but I may be wrong, but it was from a person she went to, graduated from high school with, and I'm just gonna read this to you, and to me, it just kind of sums up Popper Bluff, and it says, "I am from Popper Bluff, Missouri. I was born and raised there, and I will forever be a show-me girl. But today, I was beyond proud of the sweet folks that live in Popper Bluff. Popper Bluffians are not fancy people, they are hard-working individuals who care for each other and are known for their kindness. They still send handwritten Christmas cards and take chicken soup to the sick. They go to church on Sundays and shop at Walmart during the week. They love the Popper Bluff Mules High School sports and raise their children to say yes, ma'am, and yes, sir. They love music and will show up to hear Wally Duncan's band play and line up to hear some great gospel music." But today, excuse me, but today, on the day that we laid my sweet cousin to rest, I was again reminded about what a wonderful place Popper Bluff really is. The funeral was at Cottrell's, so as the service ended, the cars began forming the procession on Vine Street, which is, by the way, is totally made of beautiful red brick, and began the journey toward the internment at Memorial Garden Cemetery. What was so amazing was that as we drove, every car immediately pulled to the side in honor of the funeral procession. Even when we turned on 67 South, all the cars pulled to the shoulder to show their respect. I noticed the drivers were both young and old, so obviously respectful behavior is characteristic of all Popper Bluffians, no matter what age. I thought to myself, I am from this wonderful town, wonderful town that is my hometown in southeast Missouri. God blessed me to be born and raised in a fine place with the best folks in the world. God blessed me to be born and raised in a fine place with the best folks in the world. And today, the citizens live up to the standards they live every day, showing kindness and respect. Yes, I am proud to say, I am from Popper Bluff, Missouri, the home of the finest of the fine." Just kind of made you feel good about Popper Bluff when I read that, and I thought I'd share that. But the only other thing I have is, I'm hoping to have budget done a week from today, and going to try to have it on the December 2nd workshop meeting. If not, I may ask that we have it later in the week and have a special meeting just for the budget, so y'all will have ample time to vote on it later in December, so as soon as I have more information, I'll get that to you. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further?
Motion adjourned.
Okay. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?